Uh, we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. We're gonna use the signage in the back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I do not see anybody. I wanna make sure I am not missing anybody. Is there anybody here for public comment? Not seeing anybody. We're gonna move on. We have some. Uh, we have meetings from October twenty eighth to approve. I do have a couple of um, corrections that need to be made, so if somebody wants to.
I move that we accept the minutes from October twenty eighth.
Alright, so we, um, there's just a couple of corrections that I saw on, um, uh, number seven on the second page, um, the report of the Franklin Tech representative. Um, I'm quoted as saying that it's, that the FAA, um, it's FFA. It's a different organization. So FFA is the organization that I was, um, referring to. And then there's another on page eight, um, under Mark move to approve the new handbook. Um, it's, uh, it's talking about, actually, it's talking about the blinds. So underneath that, um, the blinds project discussion and possible vote. It says the company is willing to replace the blinds under budget. And then it says McKenzie reviewed all locations in the building that will be updated. I did not review the locations. I just had a list of the number of, um, rooms and windows. So I just wanna be clear that I have not physically walked around and inspected anything. It, it was a list of, uh, it was a list of how many windows and, um, it, and it also referenced a, a couple of, um, classroom numbers of particular, um, doors and windows and classrooms. And then finally, on page nine, um, the discussion about the, the warrant to change the bylaws. So I just wanna clarify, um, that paragraph says, uh, a proposal changed, um, a, there's a proposed change to our bylaws. So we are proposing a change to our bylaws to streamline appointing not school committee members. It's the, um, representatives to the school committee. So the school committee has an established way that they are appointed. We're not changing that. We are, we are looking, or we were taking a vote to change the bylaw on how the representatives to the school committee are, um, are appointed. So I just, again, wanna. Um, say that again.
Uh, to streamline, so this, uh, both change to your bylaws to streamline, um, appointing representatives to the, uh, that.
Um, it's the school committee representatives.
Which school committee are you referring to?
It's our school committee. It's the representatives of the Franklin Tech and, um, Gil Montague. They are the Gil Montague representatives, the Franklin Tech representatives. It is those representatives that we are looking to have, um, the process changed. Was there any other changes that needed to be made?
Nope.
Okay, so, um, can we, um, vote the amended minutes?
So move, well, no, I already.
We.
Already did the motion and.
To. As amended. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Um, alright, moving on. Um, we have some warrants that need to be approved. We have, um, payroll warrants, one oh, one oh nine, one oh nine point one, and one ten.
I move to, no, right, I move to approve payroll warrant numbers, one oh nine, one oh nine point one, one ten.
That'd be it.
That's it.
Payroll warrants, do them first.
Alright, so we just need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And account, I will make a motion to approve accounts payable, um, one zero one six FS, Caitlin?
Food service.
Okay. One zero one seven, one zero one eight.
A second?
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And secondary, I'll make a motion, one ele, um, sorry, eleven oh five and eleven oh six.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Moving on, we have some grants that we need to approve. We have IDA, IDEA grant. Um, it, the fund code is number two forty, um, for fifty thousand nine fifty seven. Fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand nine fifty seven. Wasn't sure if I said that right the first time.
Can we do acceptance of all three?
Uh, is there any objection? Okay, we, we.
Can you just state for the record what the IDEA stands for?
Sure. Um, you wanna talk to it, Caitlin?
It's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
Thank you.
So we get two of those, um, the second one is for early childhood. So the IDEA EC fund code two sixty-two for one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. And then we get a rural aid grant for, um, twenty-four thousand thirty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
There we go. You're moving to accept that?
Um, they make that motion that we accept those grants, yes.
I second your motion.
Okay, great. Any other discussion about that? Yep, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I do not see the, uh, we still do not have, as far as I'm know, a representative to the Gil Mon, uh, Gil Montague representatives, excuse me. Um, so again, I will, I will ask the public if there's any interest in becoming the Gil Montague representative, um, to please, uh, either contact me or contact Brian Smith at the town hall. Um, the report of the Franklin County Technical School Representative. Again, I do not see them present. We did get a, um, a couple of notices. We will attach them to the, um, to the minutes. Um, but since we do not have their up here, we're gonna move on. Uh, collaborative for educational services report.
Uh, yes. Hmm, no, we have not met since the last meeting.
Okay, a regionalization update.
That one has met. I have brief notes on that one. Uh, the meeting was November fourth. The entire meeting was brochure revamping and remapping and reorganizing of the new brochures that will be getting printed to being sent out. They're still looking at spring votes to bring to all of their town meetings. That was the entirety of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will say that I did meet with a, um, couple of the representatives from the Pioneer District at the conference that I attended. They are very interested in, in discussing with Irving a possible tuition agreement. Um, so they're very open to the idea. They approached me. Um, so it's something to think about as we, as we think more about that process. And the other piece that I will mention in this, in this section is that I also did, um, speak with, um, a, a, an attorney, um, and it's actually the same attorney that we use for our special education services. And, um, that, um, that firm can represent us if we want to, um, use them to negotiate a new, uh, tuition agreement, either with the same district or a different district, so.
The people in Pioneer, when they were discussing with you, were they discussing with us, a new, having a new agreement with the new consolidated? Or were they discussing the idea that maybe we would be switching our students to them?
We didn't have a lengthy conversation. The, what I gleaned from the quick conversation that we had was they were interested in looking at us becoming partners or tuitioning to Pioneer. But again, it was a short conversation, something that we would have to have a much longer conversation about, but they were, they were speaking on behalf of solely Pioneer.
Um, and finally, is that a discussion from their school district, or that was just individuals having a, uh, what about discussion?
I would say, again, it was a short conversation. It was school committee members that I was speaking with, um, and, um, just to start to open the door, to have that conversation. And so I think it would be a good idea for us to create, um, I guess it would be a subcommittee, I think would be the most procedurally correct way to do this, um, to discuss our tuition agreement. And, and discuss it in all ways, staying with what we have, finding another, um, uh, district to, to, um, partner with, or the chance that there's gonna be a brand new third option out there that we will need to discuss, so, um. And I think probably sooner rather than later, especially since the voting is gonna happen in the spring. Um, so I, I think for, unless there's any objections, I think we should put that on the December, um, agenda to, uh, create that subcommittee, figure out who wants to be on it and.
Yeah, could I just speak to that briefly? So my understanding is correct, and everybody watching, the thousands of people watching us, their, their understanding is correct. We're not suggesting that we, as the Irving School Committee, have any desire to go change what's going on. But because of changes that are taking, perhaps taking place with a new district with other towns, uh, it's wise to just look at what, what, uh, possibilities there may be. So that if that new district comes about, we, uh, understand where we currently are, where we might wanna go with that district, if perhaps, or what are alternatives there might be. Not, not that we have any, um, ill feeling toward where we currently are. We just, it's just wise to understand what your options are instead of waiting till the last minute to see what your options might be. Is that accurate?
Um, I think mostly, I think we are overdue in general. Um, we are overdue to look at our tuition agreement and see if it is. Um, my underst, from, from, my understanding from other districts that have tuition agreements is that it's like any other kind of contract, is that there's a, it's for three years, it's for five years, it's for ten years. There's some amount of time. And then you, you know, kinda re-up it and look at it and make any changes you wanna make. And for some reason, ours doesn't seem to have that. Ours is just kind of an evergreen, like forever and ever. Um, so I think, so we haven't looked at it for many, many years. I think this is the, what's kind of pushing us to do it. But I think even if this weren't happening, we should be looking at it anyways to see if it's still can meeting our needs.
I certainly agree. Good, whatever your contract might be, uh, in, in any business, and school is school, but it's a business too. Uh, it's wise to look at what, to periodically look at what you have and what you might have. I just want to, to stave off any big groundswell of people deciding, the school committee's trying to go somewhere else. We're not trying to do that. We're just doing good business.
Yeah, I think, I think we're gonna look at everything.
Okay.
Um, I just would.
I would hope we would look at everything. I'm not making that, you know, declaration, but that would be my hope.
I would like it, given that what we're, what we're looking at is not just, you know, the ongoing agreement we have, but the fact that who we have that ongoing agreement with is perhaps in flux or perhaps not. Um, so it's, it's a bigger choice than just saying what the dollars and cents are of the agreement, uh, or the parameters are of a set agreement, uh, can, that would continue as is to some extent. Um, but it's, do we send them up to this school? Do we, is that school going to be combined with this? You know, and so, and I would like to see that subcommittee include some citizens, some people who are not on the school committee. I mean, so it might include a couple of us, but it might, but it might also include, um, somebody else from the town, um, that would feel, speaking directly to the microphone or the camera, um, somebody else that would feel strongly about, um, hey, we really need to think about this regardless of what comes down the road in terms of regionalization.
And I may, I just build on that a little bit. It would be my preference. People can do what they want. It would be my preference that we have one school committee member, so we don't have a, uh, open meeting violations. They can have meetings with a subcommittee. Um, but also that somebody who's interested is just interested because they're interested. They don't have an axe to grind. They don't hate where we are. They don't love where we are. They're, they're just, they're interested, you know, looking at this in an impartial, unbiased way. Well, it looks like it's best for our students and the taxpayers and, and the whole, the whole deal. Yeah, be my thought, hopefully.
Alright. Alright, so we will have this on our dis, our agenda for, um, discussion again and, and make a, make a plan. Um, capital planning committee update. Do you have any update from capital planning?
Haven't met.
I didn't think so. Okay, great. Moving on to our superintendent report.
Alrighty. It's actually a pretty short one this month. Um, so some Irving updates. Uh, Irving school leadership and teachers continue to focus on implementing high quality instruction and materials through their work with the Prism Grant and the DESI vendor that is assigned to them, which is TNTP. Classroom walkthroughs have helped to identify building instructional trends and helped support strong instructional practices. Um, exciting news, we have been accepted into the accelerated repair program through the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the roof repair and heat pump conversion project. The project has a commencement date of March second, twenty twenty-six. Caitlin and I will work with Brian to, um, from the town hall to ensure the select board, uh, and the select board to ensure that the MSBA has all the required documentation before the commencement date. Um, we actually just got an invitation for a meeting that Caitlin, Brian and I will be attending where, start the process. I wanna remind everyone accelerated is in name only. It is not, it is quicker than a build project, but it is not, um, it is not, uh, exceptionally timely, but we're still grateful. The timeline for the construction phase of the project is likely twenty twenty-seven. Uh, some Union twenty nine, twenty-eight updates, though I did write twenty-nine on my paper.
Yes. Um, that it says heat pumps. So that would be a conversion to heat pumps from the current HVAC systems. Since heat pa, heat pumps and HVAC systems are different.
You're asking about what the, what the actual equipment?
Cause I thought it was just a, a replacement of the current units, which are HVAC units as opposed to heat pumps, which were suggested that we entertained a while back for classrooms.
That was different. I think that was the electrification system.
Right, that came up then. But the new ones, I mean, when we put, are we converting to heat pumps on the roof? Or are we converting, are we simply putting new HVAC units on the roof?
I think we are converting to heat pump systems, but I would have to kinda look back at our application that we had.
Okay.
Support with to really give you a. I will get an answer to that for you. It's been a long time since I read that report in, in detail, so I apologize that I don't have all the details, um, around that, but I, I will get them for you. Um, did you have any other questions about that before I go on to? Okay. Uh, the joint supervisory committee and the budget and personnel subcommittee met last night. Uh, draft budget was presented, um, and the super, it is not voted on yet. Um, it's just the draft will be voted on and we're anticipating in January. Um, and the superintendent's goals were shared. Those were approved, um, and the JSC will meet again in January. Um, across all Union twenty-eight districts, we have begun the budget planning process, recognizing that we're coming into a challenging fiscal year. We have had planning meetings that involve the director of finance, superintendent, director of curriculum, director of student support and, um, building principals. That's happened in every school, including here at Irving Elementary. Um, we're committed to being transparent and collaborative in the budget building process. Um, some legislative updates. Uh, there was a chapter seventy listening session held at Greenfield High School on November sixth. I was able to attend and to submit testimony, I've linked it, um, about the need to review and make changes to the chapter seventy funding formula. The formula is outdated. It is not equitable for rural districts and municipalities. Um, at a recent superintendent's roundtable, the director of MASSS and MAS, um, spoke together. They, um, were speakers, shared, um, their thoughts about the chapter seventy funding formula out, um, and they were very frank in saying that these listening sessions were great, but there is no plan on the table about that, um, change. And so if there is any change to that funding formula, which is sorely needed in Western Massachusetts, um, it is several years out. So just for a full transparency on that. And that is my report.
I do have a question. I know Beth is not here tonight. I'm hoping that you either have the answer or can get the answer from Beth. I am wondering, um, whether Irving is, um, is applying for the DESI early literacy high dose tutoring that's currently available? And, um, whether they, um, any information has gone out to staff about the, uh, literacy launch institutes? The institute that we did over the summer.
Lindsay Rodriguez is looking into, she's working with Amy Langdon about the tutoring. Um, it's been, that we're gonna probably apply as a consortium because we have a better, um, bang for our buck with that. Um, and yes, the, um, literacy launch information was just shared with schools from my office. Now whether staff have got it yet, it will go out this week, so I can't say that. It might be in there Friday.
But the plan, the plan to put it out.
There is, yes. Um, it was shared with all buildings from my office this week. And the expectation is they will get it out to their staff this week. I know here they do an end of the week, um, sort of thing, but if it hasn't come yet, there is a plan to get it.
Okay, and, and, and some nice, you know, encouragement to do it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, great. I know the, uh, the, the tutoring, um, deadline is next week, so, um, I'm, I'm curious how that's going. Okay.
Alright, was that it?
Any other questions about that? Alright, so we're up to the director of finance and operations.
Um, I'm gonna start with the budget. I have my report and I listed last, but I'm gonna, uh, flip the report and do the budget first. Um, I have a presentation, but I'm not sure how to be able to project it. So I'm gonna wait on the presentation till next month and revise it, but tell you everything that I was going to say about it.
Okay, so what are you, what are you looking at so that I can open it to look at the same thing that you're looking at?
Oh, do you wanna share, I can share the presentation, so, but then you're gonna have to act surprised when you see it again next month.
No, no, I just wanna, is that what, are you talking about it right now? Is that what you're talking about right now? So you're gonna talk about before you?
The budget.
Okay.
Yep.
But like what should have, is it all in?
It, so you should have this document in your.
That's, that's what I'm asking about. Yeah.
I think it is the second link.
The second link.
I think.
Well, that's the secondary expenditures.
Let me, um, I'm gonna share it with you anyway so that you have it.
Okay.
And.
I, I have links for the operations report. I have the school spent, expend, expenditure and secondary expenditure. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, so I just sent you the presentation, um, and I'll.
We anticipated being able to have this. We didn't think about that when Beth went home.
Yeah, I was relying on.
It just came in, was that what, one thing?
Yeah, look in your email. Yep, so I just sent it.
Okay, presentation's here, got it.
So I'm not gonna go, um, exactly slide by slide, uh, because not everyone can, um, see everything, so. Last night we presented to the joint supervisory committee last night, the draft budget has an overall increase of five point five percent. Notable increases are the educational leadership improvement dues. That had a one thousand two hundred dollar increase. Uh, our dues have just gone up over the years and we haven't adjusted that line to, to meet that need. Um, director of curriculum and instruction salary, computer services, the, that is, uh, for central office, we have to maintain our own technology and IT services and, uh, what we're doing now isn't sufficient and so we need to increase it so that we can have something sufficient for, for central office. Disability insurance, school board liability insurance, central office rent and other increases were for STEPS COLAs all ranging from two to six point six percent.
Um, when, when you talk about, uh, central office rent.
That's our storage unit. Where we keep all our files.
Okay, so it's not, okay. And, um, I see the director of curriculum and instruction salary, s, but your salary also changed. Is that correct?
Yep, it's all within that two to six point six percent.
Okay, why in particular is the director of curriculum instruction pulled out as a separate line?
I used a rubric for what was over a certain percentage or over a dollar amount, and those are the ones that stood out. So we use a five-year rolling average to come up with the assessment for each of the, the districts. This year for Irving, it is twenty-four point three seven percent. It's down from, uh, twenty-four point six nine percent. So when you look at the five point five percent budget increase for U twenty-eight, it is a four point one seven percent for Irving. It's slightly less than five point five because the, uh, the assessment came in a little lower because the enrollment dropped. I have a summary of where our, our law, our uses of funding in those subcategories were and what their percent increases were or decreases. It is an overall budget of two point five percent increase. For the administration summary, this is that, that first category. Uh, over eighty-six percent of the administration portion of the budget are U twenty-eight lines. Some of the increases in administrative expenses include school committee contracted services. So every three years we have to go through an end of year report audit and we're up for that in the coming year. So instead of budgeting that amount every year, when we won't have it, it'll be something that comes in one year and then goes in the next and the following year and then comes back again. The twenty-eight educational leadership improvement dues, that's the one that I mentioned before, that did have an increase. It looks big. It's twenty-seven point seven percent, which is two hundred and eighty dollars. For instructional lines, the Irving School Committee and Irving Education Association ratified the fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-eight agreement over the summer. The cost of living increase for FY twenty-seven is three point five percent. The budget includes projected changes to salaries, positions and use of grants without any decrease in staff. Other non-salary and position changes are summer tutor programs. We moved twelve thousand in funding into experiential learning to try to, because it was summer programs, some of the things that fell into summer programs were not, um, special, special education associated. They were summer programming for other students, so we've moved it into experiential learning, which is where those will come out next year. The substitute salary, regular education, we reduced by nine thousand one hundred dollars to reflect the use of fewer outside substitutes. Instructional supplies, we increased by a thousand dollars because the anticipated loss of Title II A and Title IV funding. The total increase for instruction is two point two five percent.
Have we gotten confirmation that we are losing Title II A and, um, four?
We are anticipated to lose it, yeah, at the federal level.
Okay, and, um.
We've been told not to, in all, not to budget for it because they don't anticipate for sure that those funds are gonna be cut. We're hoping that our other title funds aren't cut, but we have been told, I've been told at superintendent's meetings, Caitlin's been told at, um, finance director meetings and. meetings, Caitlin's been told at Finance Director meetings, and Amy Langdon's been told at Special Education Director meetings. Do not count on those funds.
Other school services, changes were health supplies, we increased from 2,000 to $2,500 to reflect the increase in supply prices. Experiential learning, we increased by that $12,000 that we moved from a different line, from summer tutor programs.
But that's not, I mean, that's just a shifting from one line to another.
Yep. Special education transportation, we, changes of transportation needs and circuit breaker allocation. 20,000 is budgeted to come from circuit breakers, so the line reduced by, to 19,000, reduced by $19,294. So we had a decrease in other school services. Plant Operations Maintenance Summary, the largest changes of the plants and operations budget lines are around deductions and relocations and what we were using Rural Aid money for. So the custodial salaries increased due to STEPS and COLA and the inclusion of the summer custodial services. So as we know, with this past summer, the substitute custodial took, was used for the summer custodial, but we've changed that to the salary line. It should be in the salary line, and so we've increased the salary line to include the summer custodial.
But that summer custodial position has been in place for years and years, so what? What has been done in years past? Because it hasn't come out of the custodial line in years past. It was budgeted in. Why was it not budgeted in?
I think we had an increased need for summer custodial this year. We had some programming running out of the school with the Stars Program, and so when that happened, there was additional custodians needed, and so it came out of the substitute, which had become a umbrella for substitute and for some hired summer work to support, but since that's now more established, it's gonna go into the custodial salary line.
So we've always had summer programs, it's happened here over the summer. I'm not sure why the Star Program, did you say Star Program? Would have necessitated so much more custodial manpower. I mean, we've had, we've had the summer program here, we've had tutoring here, we've had summer programming, independent of the rec program running here, and we've never needed that additional custodial work, so.
So we had a third custodian used before COVID, and then when COVID happened, that position drifted off. And so we're not reestablishing that position, but there's been some more support that's been needed. For Line 7780, Fuel and School Power, we, those are increases due to changes in Rural Aid funding, which were previously covering fuel and power. Now is budgeted to cover some of the loss of the Bright funding and the therapeutic services line. Rural Aid is great, that we can use it for a multitude of lines and reasons, and so we're kinda covering that gap in the therapeutic services line with Rural Aid.
Hang on, what is the funding, is this because we are, Bright is phasing out?
The Bright funding is phasing out, yes.
Okay, so I don't know that we have, we've decided that we are keeping that program on, but you've added funding to it. That's the end of my sentence. You've added funding to it, even though we have not agreed that that.
So that would be a me issue then, because that was something Beth and I assumed that we were gonna be continuing. So if that is not the case, then we will obviously have to redo the budget. But that isn't something that Caitlin did that at mine, in Beth's discussion when we sat, she didn't do it in isolation.
Okay, we were really clear when that Bright program started, that it was something was, yes, we get this funding and that's great, so let's go ahead and try it. But as soon as it starts costing us money, is when we need to pause and reflect and do some data and really see if this is something that we are going to continue with, because now it is gonna be our dollars that are gonna have to pay for it.
Well, this is just a draft budget, so we can certainly, we can add that to the vote for December and we can make modifications.
Yeah, I think it has to be a vote because of the way we decided to accept it.
Okay.
To continue, we would have to vote, yes, we've decided to continue it, since that wasn't the original acceptance.
So we can, you know, kind of placeholder, understand that that money was put there, but yeah, I think some more discussion has to happen about that.
Yeah, we still have, I mean, it's November, we have December, January, February.
Yep.
There, this is early.
There will be no surprise then when you ask, how do you project, how do you propose to fund it?
Yep, yep. So the total increase to plant operations and maintenance is an 8.85% increase. Fixed charges and improvement, fixed asset summary, the reduction in equipment line by $1,000 since the removal of the storage unit, we cleaned it out, we sent it back, we don't have that expense anymore, so we're able to reduce that line. Programs with their schools, the special education tuition with their schools. The budget reflects a shift in population of Irving Elementary students attending out-of-district programs and the use of IDEA Federal Special Education Entitlement Grant to cover most of the remaining costs. The decrease in programs with their schools is 72.7%. There's our, we have a grant summary of what we have been using, where we've been using it, where we plan on using it. We're decreasing a little bit to reflect some of the decreases in some of the funding. IDEA and Rural Aid have decreased, and.
Our Rural Aid has decreased? I thought our allotment had increased.
Our Rural Aid had decreased from what we received last year.
Okay.
Possible additional reductions. So in the FY27 budget, if the FY27 budget had to be reduced to a 0% increase, these are the areas of reductions and how much each line would be reduced, and we went through these very carefully. The principal professional expense, we would decrease by 1,000, principal technology by 1,000, experiential learning by 2,500, library materials by 1,200, food service by 5,000, summer, substitute summer help by 3,000. Those were the reductions we could do in the budget without starting to look at salaries. That would leave a salary reduction of $77,267.
And this came from taking a proactive approach at a department meeting. It was clear they would like, Beth came back and she's been an active member of those department meetings and said they would like to see what does a 0% look like and what would have to happen to get there. And so Beth, Caitlin, and I sat and went line by line and dollar by dollar, so this is not something we're advocating for, but in full transparency, if we're directed by the town and by the committee that this is where you need to be, these are the things where we're looking at.
And what you just listed off, where is that in here?
It's not. So this is the budget, this is our level service budget of two and a half percent, but we are being mindful of the town's request and we have a plan.
And that's in your slideshow?
Yes.
I just wanna be clear too, the town has not requested anything one way or the other, so you're doing this in preparation in case there is more discussion about it. But I just wanna be clear that there has not yet been any discussion with the town.
That was a discussion at a department meeting, and so Beth had asked us to be proactive, because we want to be good partners with the town.
Yeah.
And they're asking departments to have a plan, if that is, you know, you wanna have a plan ahead of time for sure. And so this is just trying to be fully transparent about our initial thoughts, and this is a draft form, so I don't want anyone to panic and say this is, this is it. But we also wanna be transparent about where we identified that we could make cuts that we don't wanna make if we are directed, and that reality is not unique to Irving right now. Every town is asking us to look at that, so we're having similar conversations in other towns.
What is our current percent increase?
2.5%.
2.5.
Which I will point out is less than.
Oh yeah, no, I had no doubt about that.
The 2.5% of what, everything overall, everything considered?
Yes, so 2.5% over what we received last year. You got the best seat.
I feel like if we shift it just like a smidge that way, it would move back here and then I can just do this.
Yep.
Exercise your arms.
Irving Secondary Budget.
Let's pause there for a minute, because I do have another, I have two questions about, before we move on to the secondary. One, I had asked, you know, to look into the possibility of using that, our school-owned bus as a midday bus for other districts. I'm curious if you've gotten any information about that, and?
Amy has put it out for, within her director's group, because that would really be the right spot. Any request is not aligned with where we would have to go being back on time. So at this point, nobody has, it has not come to fruition, but we have put it out there.
And what is the rate that was set for that, and?
We just looked with the speed, a need for anyone, because we hadn't gotten that far as what that rate would be, and then if there was a need, that would be the next step.
Okay.
Because I think it would depend, right, where are we transporting to, and so there'd be a number of factors, but we have not had any response from somebody who's been interested at this point. But it is something that she's continuing to make known, that that could be something that we would be interested in if we can meet the needs of our own students.
Sure. And when you say she's put it out to, who is in her network that she's putting it out to?
She belongs to the local, local and regional Director of Student Support Groups, because those are the people that typically their offices are the ones that are contracting for transportation.
So it's our, it's our, kind of our neighboring districts?
Yep.
Okay. And then the second thing is the Stars Program. We do, we do receive tuition, right, from our out-of-district students. So where is that money? Where does that money go? Where is that money reflected?
We have a revolving fund for that, which receives a tuition, and then we pay partial salaries out of that.
And those, that's reflected in here somewhere?
So if there is a, let's say a paraprofessional that works in that program that is supporting a student that is from a different district, then you won't see that expense in ours, because it comes directly out of the revolving fund.
Why is that district not paying for their own paraprofessional to come with that student? Why are we paying them?
So we pay for the paraprofessional, they're an employee in our district, and then they pay the tuition that covers the paraprofessional.
In other words, they're paying the cost.
Yeah.
But we're the ones handling the check. Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, they're an employee of Irving Elementary School.
But we pay for them out of the tuition that we charge.
But the money coming in from the tuition is where we get the money to pay the.
Yes.
Correct.
But the, but the, the benefit is of that student who is an out-of-district student. Why are we paying above, why are we paying out of our tuition, out of the tuition that we are receiving for that service?
Because that's what they're paying for when they come here. I guess I'm not getting the question.
Is what there, is the cost of them sending a student in here equivalent to the cost of the paraprofessional? Or is there extra on top of it?
Oh, there's extra on top of it. It's part of what we charge.
So where is that extra being reflected?
It goes into the revolving account.
And then, what, it doesn't sit there? What are we doing with that money?
So their tuition amount covers the paraprofessional and also some of the special education, part of a special education teacher salary. I think I have to look exactly, but I think a part of the BCBA salary. Those things are taken off of our operating budget, because it's being paid into the revolving fund and their salaries are being partially paid out of the revolving fund.
Okay, so I would like to see that next time, or send it to us in between the meeting, is fine, of exactly how much money we've received, how much money we're spending on a paraprofessional, because that's now an employee that has other costs to the town attached to it. That, is that cost being covered by the tuition as well?
Yes, we, yes.
So the benefits of that paraprofessional are coming out of that tuition?
The cost.
Of the benefit, so the health insurance is being paid for the, by the town to educate this out-of-district person. Is that tuition also covering, is any of that money going to the town to help cover the tuition, the benefits of that person's health insurance?
Yes, we also factored into that the cost of the tuition.
In the cost of tuition?
Yes.
And then there's some amount left over after all those costs are being paid?
Correct.
Sounds like not a lot.
Not a lot. I mean, we don't charge more tuition than the cost of serving the student.
And so then I would like to see what that is and exactly where that is compared to, like what percentage of somebody else's salary is being paid by that?
Sure.
And so far, that program is only serving Irving and Union 28 students.
Yes.
And is there room for, or possibility for non-Union 28? Because we had said, when we set it up, that, you know, we would accept, to a limited degree, non-Union 28 student aid, one or more.
They would get preference.
If necessary, if possible, and they would get a higher tuition, I believe.
I don't know about a higher tuition.
I have to look at what we put then. I don't remember that offhand, so I don't wanna misquote. But yes, we had agreed that it would serve as Irving students, right, because that was the reason for the program. But we can't run it with a cohort of two, right, and so we wanted to open it up and that we would open it up to our partners in Union 28, and we agreed that in the initial year, we would keep it there as we sort of built the plane while we were flying it. And I can ask Amy, and maybe that's something to put on the agenda for an update, from a pro, you know, Caitlin can work on getting you the financial update, but from a larger programmatic view, I could have Amy give it an update and we could add that to the next. I know, I don't wanna speak for her about where she is in that process of getting other students in.
How many current students do we have?
Three, I believe. Three.
I think three, but I don't wanna be.
Yeah.
One Irving and two other Union 28?
I think it's two Irving.
Two Irving, and another.
But I don't wanna misquote.
Let's put that on the December agenda, and then we'll ask those questions to the person, we'll have the answers.
I would just like to, can you say anything about the salaries amount? Because that's, you know, that's the place it hurts the most. If you're going, you know, if you're taking, if to hit this, to hit a target such as this, you know, that line is the one that really is gonna.
Are you talking specifically to Stars?
The staff on.
Oh, you're talking about in the?
Potential zero increase, you know.
I would, I, I, I don't wanna panic anyone, right?
I don't wanna do it, I'm not panicking.
As Mackenzie said, we haven't been told that this is a directive.
Right, I know.
So exactly what that looks like, whether it's one position or two, or is it a reduction in positions, I'd like to wait until we're given that, but I wanna be upfront. I mean, certainly if the committee says, you haven't, you know, laid out in more detail, but at this point.
It's just a specific number, you know, all the way down to the seven dollars. So I wondered if that was something, you know, if that was a position, or whether it was a, you know, taking something out of a number of salary-related items?
Yeah, so that was, once we looked at supplies, materials, things like that, and we removed that, that would be the number that we would have to remove from salaries.
Oh, in other words, you got everything else out, and this amount would be left that you'd have to find a place for.
Yes.
It's not something in specific.
And we would really have to look, Mark, to be perfectly right, if we were directed to do that and we knew this was the ballpark of what we had to look for, we would look at what are our needs within the building, where could we, what does that look like? And it could be a partial reduction from a couple of positions, it could be one position, it could be not hiring, so we don't have a definite plan, but we just wanna give a breakdown of this is what it would look like if we were asked to do a zero percent.
It makes a lot of sense now, it makes sense now where that number came from.
Yeah. I, I, I just want to, just for the listeners at home, just be really careful about using the word directive, like the town doesn't direct us to do, they suggest, they, they, they strongly encourage, but we don't, we don't get a directive, so I just wanna be careful about using that word. Just because I know, you know, that sometimes can be taken in different ways.
Sure.
You know, and ultimately, we bring our budget to the town meeting.
Exactly. Yep.
They have done, they have done some radical things in town meeting in past years.
Yep.
I'm saying town meeting has done some radical things in town past. I'm saying town meeting has done some radical things in town past years, so.
So the secondary budget, it's really too early to tell. Um, for administration, we don't have any changes. For instruction, we can reduce the special education instructional materials by seven hundred. Reduction in contracted services by a thousand. Other school services, uh, increase in spec- in secondary transportation, a little bit of an increase there. About one thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. Reduction in special education transportation, um, oh, sorry, secondary in transportation will go up, because our contract's gonna go a little higher. And then reduction in special education transportation by eleven thousand four hundred three dollars, just in shifting populations. But really, the regular and special education tuition to public schools. We haven't received our force, our first quarter tuition invoice yet. So we don't even have a place to look at of what we're paying this year and how many students we have and what their rate is. To be able to project for next year. If we kept those lines the same, then we're seeing a total decrease of, um. Twenty-four thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is a, it's going down by one point nine percent. But really, it is much too early to determine what the secondary budget will look like in November.
And why is the, eh, when you said a shift on the special education, is that because we have students that are aging out that no longer require that? That, or, or moved or somehow are no longer requiring that.
Yes.
Transportation?
Uh, any other questions about the budgets?
And we have nobody aging into needing that transportation?
We have some shifts, but I don't, I don't know that I can answer that right now. I'd have to look at all of our, we kind of keep track of every student, where they are, what their tuition is, what their transportation is, is it public, is it private? And, um, all those factors. So if there are any other questions, I can move into, um. The twenty-seven pay periods. So, every year, there are twenty-six pay periods. And what that does is it takes a salary, uh, whether you're an hour- hourly employee or salary employee. It divides it by twenty-six paychecks. But there's more than fifty-two weeks in a year. There's fifty-two weeks and additional day or two. And so what ends up happening to the calendar is that that first paycheck, if it starts on September fifth. The next year will be September fourth and September third and September. And it keeps creeping up until we make an adjustment to shift it back to, to start at an appropriate date. So we are due, maybe a little overdue for that adjustment. Which is why we've spoken to all of our town treasurers, accountants. And we have laid out a plan that we think is going to be the most, um. Reduced as much hardship on employees as possible. So some, here are some of the options that districts do. Uh, if you're a regional school district, just one regional, you can every seven years, push it back a week. So there's three weeks between paychecks. If you're a municipal district, that would put you out of line with the rest of the municipal employees. And the treasurers are then be doing two separate payrolls. We can't really do that.
Uh, Caitlin, we don't have access, I don't have access to that spreadsheet that you have linked in there?
Sure, the one that, um, ha.
It's in the, under the twelve month employee, last paragraph.
I think it should be printed in your.
I don't think, well, maybe not. Let me get to it. I'll give everybody access.
Is this another one you're gonna have to send to us?
Nope. I'll, I'll make sure that it's, uh.
No, just go back to the.
That has a link in it.
Go, go, go.
That I'm gonna make sure that the sharing is for anyone that has the link.
Oh, you're not in the right place. You gotta go into her.
Does it please see the spreadsheet?
Into her.
Yep, Director of Finance Report.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll, I mean, I can speak to the spreadsheet, but really, it's just if you're really into spreadsheets and you want to see exactly how it looks. That's where it is. Um, so.
I think the three papers that are printed give you.
All of the.
The information.
That does have it.
Yeah.
Yep, the sheet has the information. There you go.
These are the sheets that are printed that she's referring to.
So, we have considered all of the options and the best option we find is to, instead of having twenty-six pay periods in one year. To have twenty-seven pay periods. What this will do is reduce just slightly how much, um, the paychecks will be. So my example is for someone making seventy-five thousand dollars, they would be receiving two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars per cha- paycheck. If, when we go to twenty-seven paychecks, if it's a three percent increase, which you know that you've given a three point five. It would go down to two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. So really a twenty-four dollar difference, but since you're at three point five, it'll be even or if not a lot, eh, eat a little bit more. So it takes the paychecks and instead of dividing it by twenty-six, divides it by twenty-seven. And this is our way of not having to skip a paycheck. So not having to go three weeks between paychecks. Or what some other districts have done for municipalities, four weeks between paychecks, just skipping an entire pay period. This would allow us to even it out and have twenty-seven paychecks. Each one for the, for FY twenty-seven next year would be slightly reduced. Or probably if you're on a st- well, if you're on a step, it would be more, if three and a half percent increase, it'd still be more. But it's dividing it by twenty-seven instead of twenty-six. The following year, it will go back to twenty-six pay periods. And then you will see the, the significant increase after that.
Is this the recommendation of the town of Irving as well? Is this what the town prefers that the school does?
Yes.
As town employees are automatically opted to that.
Yes, so the, the only two avenues we could go through for a municipality is we skip an entire paycheck and go four weeks between. Or we divide it by twenty-seven and that will bump back the first paycheck. And there's an example sheet of, for FY twenty-six, our, um. If the, oh, I'm in the wrong one. Um, if you were a twelve month employee, so, and by the way, this includes us also. Central office, custodial, cafeteria, teachers, paraprofessionals, everyone, uh, that runs for a payroll. So if you were a twelve month employee, our first paycheck would be on, uh, for FY twenty-six for next year. On July third. It's getting very close to being in the, the fiscal year ahead of time. Uh, then in FY twenty-seven would be on July second. And then by having twenty-seven pay periods, it would then be on, um, July fifteenth. So it bumps it back the first paycheck in that time. And then you'll see it kind of creeps earlier and earlier and earlier, until we'd have to do it again in FY thirty-five. And then in FY forty-six and so.
I don't know which will be our problem.
You know, has the staff been asked about this or informed about this?
So, we like to bring things to the, well, first of all, I needed to make sure that it was okay with, um, that this is going to work. For the town accountant and treasurer. So we did that step. Our next step is to bring it to you, so that you're aware of it. And then after that, and I've already had meetings, because we presented this to two other districts already. Um, meetings with the associations, so that they are aware and understand and we can answer any questions. And then, um, broader information to every, all staff members.
And have you gotten particular feedback or questions?
So I think in informal feedback, right? Because we have to have a, you know, we have to get some direction from the committee. Um, this is something that has to happen. And so the choices in all actuality are, you can keep so that you get, you know, you get your new year and you see a little bit of increase. But you're going to have to skip a pay period. So the amount they're getting paid a year is not changing. It's just their paycheck will look like, gosh, where's that raise? We just got a three and a half percent. It's just how it's spread out. But the option is, right, it's kind of a rock and a hard place. Either you're going to continue to get a pay period every two weeks like you're used to. Or you're going to go and because we're a bi-weekly pay. Is that right, bi-weekly? Is that what? I'm sure I said it correctly. Then, um, it could be a month. And so that's not an appealing option either. So, um, we felt like this was the least, um, painful. I don't know, eh, um, situation for our employees, because asking people to potentially go skip a, a, a pay period. Doesn't, doesn't feel like it's very, um, sensitive. So this is what we felt was the least, um, painful option. Again, I want to stress, nobody's getting less money. Um, but they may see, oh, I got, you know, a three, three and a half percent and somehow I end up with thirty-eight less dollars than I was getting last year. It will correct itself in what you see every week. But, um, we felt that that best served, um, the, um, employees. But that it also stayed with, because we don't make our own checks, it stayed with our municipal cycle. The municipalities can't be running one week a payroll for the schools and one week a payroll for everybody else. That's just not how it works.
They're gonna do this townwide?
No, so townwide, they don't have the twenty-six pay period issue. Um, so we would be at a sequence with them if we skipped a one week of paycheck. We would be back in sequence if we skipped over an entire pay period and went four weeks between. Uh, but this is a way of evening it out, so that we don't have to skip any paychecks.
Well, what I'm saying is if, if we do this, will we be in sync with them?
This will keep us in sync with them. Being out of sync with them isn't an option. The option is, because they, they cut the checks. The option is either you're gonna have to go a month, because we only get paid every two weeks. Or you're gonna stay on that, but we're gonna add an extra pay period. Our munis- the municipal employees aren't facing this, because they're not on a, uh, contractual cycle of twenty-six weeks. They get paid every two weeks.
Well, they still generally get paid twenty-six weeks a year. They just don't, yeah, yeah. So either way, they get paid twenty-six, they'll also get paid twenty-seven weeks in twenty-twenty-seven.
Correct.
Yeah.
So some of the questions I've, I've, uh, been asked about this from some of our other associations have been around, how does it affect health insurance? Health insurance works as there's a premium per month, it's split between two paychecks. So that will continue to be the same. Um, about taxes, I'm like, our system generates what the taxes are taken out. At the end of the year, you file taxes and whatever you've paid over is whatever paid under. Eh, those things won't change.
So the decision is, or the motion is?
Well, we don't have to take a vote. We just want to inform you, so the committee knows that this is what that, the avenue that we would, we're going to go in. We will bring it to the association and we can, um, have conversations with them. But as the committee, we wanted to inform you first.
Okay, so this is just information?
Yes.
That you're moving to the twenty-six, uh, twenty-seven pay periods for that particular year?
That we're going to, yes. That is the rec- it is the direction we need to go. If the association comes to us and says, nope, our members want to skip a pay period and that's what we'd rather do. We could enter, we can look into that and further kind of exploring that idea. Um, but this is the plan that we think best serves our, all of our staff.
I think I understand.
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just procedurally, I'm wondering if we don't have to take a vote, because we, we do take care of, of the money piece. So I would rather just take a vote, so that it's on the record in case somebody comes back and says, you guys should have voted on that? Because I, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering about that. Have we gotten any sort of?
We were not directed by Adam that we should have to take a vote.
That, so if he says no, we don't have to take a vote, then I'm okay with that. Has anybody asked specifically?
There has been language in one contract, which says that you should be paid on twenty-six pay periods. And that we're kind of exploring of how to address that. I'm not sure Irving says, I'll have to double check, but this is for information. But let's revisit it after conversations and, um, checking through. And there may be, there may need to be a vote taken about, so we address that.
Something that's gonna happen tomorrow anyway, so it's, it's fine.
We want to give everyone plenty of notice.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I certainly don't have an issue with it. I just procedurally want to make sure that we.
Yep.
Right. We don't have to come back at a random time.
And we're coming early for very frank reasons. This is going to be like, you know, I'm gonna be like the, the, what is the boy who called Wolf, right? I'm gonna be talking about this with staff, starting in January, every month. Because inadvertent, right, it's going to come in August and someone will say.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't know, and I want to be able to say, well, here are the plethora of times.
Still will, but, yeah.
Um, but in all fairness, I want to make sure people have plenty of time to adjust. This felt like it was less painful than to tell people, you have to figure out how to go a month.
I agree.
Um, and I, I remember being a teacher and, and couldn't, you know, I would always take that summer pay and then I was like wishing my summer away. Cause I'm like, when am I going back to school so I can get another check? And so I wouldn't want to do that, um, to, to, uh, our partners in, in the classrooms.
I understand the tax portion of it, totally get that. As it comes to insurance premiums, so I know my place of employment on twenty-seven year, because we're, I'm paid bi-weekly as well. Um, we don't have insurance taken from that twenty-seventh. So will they also have the, uh, insurance skipped at one point during that twenty-seven year?
Yes, so there'll still be two months, um, I can't remember, I think one's July, one's the opposite of July, the other. And so it will always act the same. If you have three paychecks in one month, the third one will not have insurance taken out. Um, and one of the other questions that I, I thought was good at another meeting was, um, that someone brought up is, you know, if there, if there is like a. Um, four or three B that's being taken out, giving enough notice, so that if some, an employee wanted to reduce that amount. For the year to, in order to compensate, that is, that's always an option also.
Okay, um, so, yes, I think we should just check in and make sure that we don't have to take a vote on that. And also our contract, because I do believe our contract does say twenty-six, but whatever the workaround is for that.
I know, I know I've taken a lot of time in the meeting so far, but, um, if we want to look at the expenditure report. Um. I don't have, I, I listed notes, um, it is attached. I don't have any, every line that I've gone through that's in the negative, let's say classroom teacher salary. I know why that's in the negative, because we had a teacher shift from one category to another, which was a higher salary. And so I don't have any concerns over our expenditure report.
Will that balance out?
Yes. So it would have been in, uh, line fifteens.
Come, where did I get it?
Go back to the agenda.
Ah, go back there.
On our printed copy, we don't have the line numbers, just so you know.
Oh, thank you.
Expenditure report.
Yeah, there we go.
A, so classroom teacher salary, regular education, um, it has a negative, because we had a shift in staff. And so higher salary went into that, after the budget was complete, lower salary came in and different line. And so there's, everything has been, um, accounted for. Uh, same for, you know, uh, for paraprofessionals or it's a teacher's aid, regular ed and special ed. We had a shift in what was needed for the school. One of those lines is fifty thousand dollars, uh, left. And then one of them is a thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, negative. Those balance out, just because of shifting of personnel.
Will you be correctively changing that, or will we just see that as the year unfolds?
You'll see that probably unless there's a change in staff, you'll see those numbers for the entire year. And so that way, when I look at for creating next year's budget, I can say, okay, this one was over, this one's under, we need to kind of correct. So for reporting and for budgeting reasons, we keep them over and under. And what matters is always the, the bottom, the bottom number. Um, which is for, if you were to cut off all spending, that's unencumbered right now, including salaries. Uh, two hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and six, all right, two hundred and fifty-fourth, um, hundred and five hundred and six. Two hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
If you want to look at it, it's, it's this document.
Yeah. I was trying to keep track of discussion.
But we are still, um, we haven't, we're waiting for the school committee vote for IDEA and for, uh, rural aid. So now that that vote's happened, it'll, it'll be adjusted for the next meeting. Um, where some salaries and expenses will be moved into those grants. Salaries and expenses will be moved into those grants.
Anybody have any questions more?
I'd ask Mike, I'm good.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Alright, um as I mentioned, Beth ended up going home, um uh sick, but we do have her. Principal's report and any questions we have, Shannon can try and answer or we can get um the answers and. Brought back. Do you wanna go through that report, Shannon, or do you wanna suggest?
I can go through it quickly to highlight for all those viewing at home. Excuse me, um current enrollment is one hundred and seven students as of November tenth.
It it does say on here that there are two star students, so it.
I think that, I I will double check that. I'm not sure if that's Irving students or uh. I would guess it would be both. I will check that, but we could, that will be part of the update that Amy gives anyway, so um. Uh one hundred and seven and it is broken down um by grade. Um the largest class being grade six, which is nineteen, and the smallest class being grade um three. And then the stars program with two. Um and seven school choice students currently of that one hundred and seven.
Um I I think preschool is the smallest.
Preschool is the smallest with eight. Eight total, still only two four-year-olds.
Is, do you know where the um school choice students went?
I I I don't know that offhand, so I would uh, I know that some are in preca- but I don't know which grade. Excuse me. Um some updates um around family and community engagement. Um they had their first uh ELA curriculum night, um twelve families attended. Um I can speak to the Veterans Day Assembly, um I was able to attend and I know that our. School committee member was also in attendance and spoke to the crowd. Um it was really a wonderful um ceremony. Um the students were actively engaged, um there was a nice gathering beforehand, um. And the veterans got up and spoke, which I thought was really, um even though there were many who said. You know, they weren't going to and then it was like, once one started speaking, they kind of uh rolled out and it was really, it was um. A really great um event for for everybody that attended. Um and the week of December eighth, um they will begin the tryouts for the Toy Story. The Great Crayon and the Slinky Dog Rescue, which is going to be the school play. Um there is also um notes from the last school council meeting, um. They met on November third, the topics included initial budgeting discussions and recommendations. Which is one of the tasks of the school improvement, uh of the school council. Is to give input into the principal around um budget. That's one of their things that they um are tasked with by Desi and um so they. There are some meeting notes, um and then she's also linked that I think is in a later agenda item, so I'm not sure if you wanna move it up. It's under new business, but it is in her, um. The school improvement plan is in her uh principal's report as well, so. We can tackle it now or we can hold it till when it comes up on the agenda.
Um but before we get to that.
Sure.
Um thus, so did the school council on November third weigh in with recommendations? And were those incorporated into the budget that was presented to us today? That would have been a quick turnaround.
So I know that those have been ongoing discussions that they have had, um so I would really defer to Beth about. Beth has been part of those ongoing discussions and what she has garnered from her school improvement council, I I wouldn't wanna be able to say. That was Beth's thought as the principal and that was feedback from the school improvement, uh from the school council, so I think we'll have to ask Beth. Um exactly what that input looked like.
Um so let me, and maybe you're answering it and then, uh so I'm gonna ask it another way and you can answer it the same way if you're answering it. Um has the s- school council, the budget we got today, does that include any? Recommendations from the school council or have that not yet had enough time to cycle through and we will get an update if they?
I I don't know exactly, what I can tell you is that the budget that was presented, we met as recently as last week. Um with Beth and Caitlin and I.
Okay.
Beth came with a number of um bullet points and ideas to the meeting. What are hers and what came from school council, I don't know.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
But we met last week, so it could very well.
It could have been, okay, alright.
Excuse me.
Um do we wanna tackle the school improvement plan now or just simply wait until new business? It's it's a couple more on the agenda, it's it's not far down the road. Do we have anybody have a preference? We'll we'll just wait then, let's just go with the agenda.
And that's the end of the principles?
Okay, yeah, sure, okay. Um Irving Education Association, I don't have anything from them. Um and there isn't a link in here, so um we're gonna move on, um. A report from Pi.
I know we got some fundraisers going on in the works, nothing at the moment. The movie night will be back in January, um and there will be another like group outing for kids. Winter break-ish time, I'm not a hundred percent, um and I know that there's talk on what to do for fundraising for. Um the spring and uh late winter.
Great, alright. Uh do you happen to have a date for the next one?
I don't, it's the first Monday of Mondays.
First Monday. Uh budget and personnel. Um it was joint supervisory last night, did budget meet also?
Yes.
Okay, they met before that, right? Okay, um Mark, do you have anything you wanna?
Well, just it was stated already, and that is that it's uh that'll come up in January. And be voted on in January, the budget will be voted on in January.
Okay, so you're, the meeting was really revolved around the budget.
I think we didn't discuss anything else, did we? Did you give it a report?
That was for the JSC, um we really talked, it was our third meeting about the budget, um and so. Um we had good conversation, um there was a recommendation and then there was a vote, um and now that. That vote just means that it's gone through that process, it's gone through the budget subcommittee and now will be presented to the full JSC for discussion and vote in January.
Alright, which moves us into the um the joint supervisory committee meeting. Which was that same night yesterday.
Yep, longest day ever.
I don't know, this one's.
This one works along, it works its way.
Forty minutes to not take it over is the longest day ever.
We're almost done.
Well, weren't all three of them there? You were there for part of it.
I was not there for part of it. Not the supervisory, remember I said I couldn't.
Thought I saw you pop in. Oh well.
I was there in spirit.
Uh from notes I took, there was discussion about the Hampshire Trust Leadership Trust hiring a consultant firm. About insurance rates, there was a lot of discussion on that, um. The special education, Amy did a great little portion there, um about her meeting. There was a talk about a, I wrote notes on it, but I don't remember exactly what we discussed on it, cause I didn't elaborate, but wellness policy slash committee. Um as a new thing and then uh there was discussion about superintendent evaluations and the cycle that we go in now. Versus your term, um and.
I mean, the valuation process right now is a yearly and we were talking about extending it and making it a two-year one. Which would um allow us to have more data available. Because the one-year one, some data wouldn't be available on certain years. So going to a two-year would be more.
I had brought it, it came up from my um superintendent's group, my mentor, um we had discussed that. Um the superintendent's evaluation cycle is built around really a twelve-month calendar because most school committees meet. If not ten months, they meet twelve months. The JSC, which evaluates me, only meets five or six times a year. And so it's very difficult to get that mid-cycle in and so um I proposed that the committee could consider a two-year cycle. Which wouldn't change anything, they'd just do a a formative with ratings at the end of a year.
Like the NVAL does.
Correct.
Okay.
Um and it really meets the timeline that's outlined because it matches up now month-wise. And what that does is it really just gives time for the committee to give me feedback and for me to really incorporate it. Cause right now with the timeline, I present my goals in November, January is mid-cycle. So there hasn't been a lot of time for people to give me feedback, for me to incorporate it. Um and it feels like it would be a more meaningful cycle if it were spread out. It doesn't make any less work for anybody necessarily. Just really allows for the um feedback from the stakeholders and for me to be able to incorporate it. So they agreed that they would do a two-year cycle, so I will, um I presented my goals in November. My mid-cycle evaluation will come in May and then my um summative will come the following spring.
And then the last item that I also, well, I wrote a couple of the random notes, but the other important one that I think um came up was. Making a facilities committee and I love that plan for a union facilities committee and have, you know, somebody from each school represented. And talk about building maintenance and building, you know, establishments and, you know, who they use for what and. Um so that was something that was also discussed last night.
Yep, I think it was um Nate Nate from uh Chutesbury had just talked about. It would be nice to have a committee that just talks about because we are all such small entities. Um you know, we it, they've had similar pri- and Irving's a little bit more unique because you have more municipal and full-time employees. Than some of the other um schools, um municipalities, but to be able to talk about experience with. You know, we have this project going, are you using this company? We use that company and to um have some of that dialogue that doesn't necessarily come when you're in. In isolation.
Alright, and so the next supervisor, joint supervisor meeting is on um January twelfth. We do not have any old business that I'm aware of, um so moving on to the new businesses, the school improvement plan. And so you have that in your packet. Um and so with, uh again, with not having the principal here, we can choose if we want to. Review it and vote on it tonight, or we can choose to review it tonight and ask questions. Get get the answers back from Beth and um vote on it next month so that we have, um you know, our our questions answered before. We go ahead and vote on it, so either one I think works.
Do you need a movement on that or do you?
Uh I think uh we can just kind of just decide amongst ourselves, we don't ha- we don't have to vote on it. Um it's there, it's on the agenda to vote in case we wanted to vote, so it didn't preclude us from voting, but we're not required to vote on it tonight. The only thing I will say about it, um in in general, just a school improvement plan is. Could we back the timeline up so that our school improvement plan is more in the September, October? Um at the beginning of the school, much to what you were talking about, it's hard to have a good improvement plan if we're not starting it until December, so. To allow for as much time as possible to enact the plan.
I I absolutely, um most of school improvement plans across the union are usually coming out in about October.
Yeah.
Um but I will say, um in a little little shout out um to um Beth that. There was not a real viable plan in place, I mean typically a principal comes in and they're building off. What was already in place.
Sure.
Um and so she was tasked with forming a committee, like a lot of stuff, um. The plan is very thorough. She has really, and one of the things that you ask in an improvement plan is this is really supposed to be a living document that drives improvement in your school. Um and I've seen a lot of improvement plans and some look really nice and you think, I don't think anybody actually looks at that until next September. Um I, that is not the case with this at all. She has really, her and her committee and a shout out to them, um. Really, they have goals around what is important to this school and what we've identified as areas for improvement. Um you know, around shared decision-making, academics, um and um community involvement. And she has put a lot of data, her, and I say her, she has worked as part of a committee, so I wanna be clear about that. They have really looked at where are we with performance and so it is not just, oh, we wanna get, you know, have better reading scores. She has really, has led that committee to dive into the work about, this is where we are and she's broken it up by by the early childhood grades. And older grades and so the committee really did a a great amount of work. I think it truly reflects. An accurate picture of where Irving Elementary is now and. A good timeline and steps about making improvements in those areas, so um I I do wanna give a shout out um. Uh to that committee.
Yeah, and I agree, and 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 it is something that we have not had. Uh um for for all of the reasons that we've already talked about for lots of times.
Oh, yep.
Um so it is wonderful to see, um and it does, it does look like a nice comprehensive document. Um but just going forward now, now that we have this, all that work has been put into creating this. Next year should hopefully be a little bit quicker, um and so the goal, if we could move it to more September, October.
Yep.
Um that would be wonderful. So, um. You know, I I I do wanna make sure that we are thoughtful about this plan because of how much work has been put into it and I wanna honor that. Um I don't want us voting on it. So.
I think we should wait.
Yeah.
Vote on it next time, but we should make an effort to go over it into the Gland in detail. So we're ready to vote.
Yeah, and I think if you do have questions, you can reach out individually to Beth to get clarification, so. Um you know, we're not asking her to re- you know, re-present it all, but um I think that a lot of work has gone into it. Um and so we can keep it on new business for a vote. Um for next um month. And also with new business, I just wanna confirm, we're gonna add the bright discussion and vote.
Um yes, the bright discussion and also we are going to get an update from.
Amy, I already voted that.
Okay, yep.
And I wanna give a shout out um for those who were able to attend, um that welcoming us into their space and. Giving us a time to look at the. Ask questions, I think that that's important for us to be able to do and to see it. Um and so I wanna, I I probably should have said that at the beginning, but um thank um Elizabeth and Leanne. Um for for preparing that and giving us an opportunity to see it.
And uh uh just to kinda help, um who did you say was gonna present on that next month?
Um I will refer to Amy and she will decide who's the right person.
So um if you could just, so we're, I think we're really looking for kind of certainly data updates. Um the financial implications of moving forward with it and um and kind of. If we're not, uh could she possibly look at it from a um. See how I wanna say this, like, is there another way to get to the same results? Could we, it could the?
Alternatives.
Al- alternative program, but also just an alternative way of running that program that we might be able to get, just so she has an idea of what, at least I'm gonna, you know, be looking for.
I think what I'll do for stars, I'll ask Amy, cause that is clearly a s- a special education sub-separate program, so I'll ask her to do that. And I think I'll touch base with Beth and Amy and Lindsay about what is the best way to give an update uh on bright, because that is not. Tech, I I don't wanna just defer it to Amy, it's not a special education program, so. Um I'm not exactly sure who will lead that effort, but one of us will.
Whomever, tho- those are kind of the, the things I'm looking for.
Just say something about the elementary school, school improvement plan.
Say something about the elementary school, school improvement plan, uh, put together by principal. I, I agree we should wait and do it thoughtfully, look through it, but also very impressed that. Everybody, I think, reads in the paper about test scores are horrible everywhere, you know, oh my god, what are we gonna do about it? Ring their hands in hope, you know, hope is not an action plan, this is an action plan. This is how are we gonna do something to make things better for our kids so they can do better? Um, any plan will be better than no plan, and, and, and uh, we may have some comments about this one, but I'm very impressed that. That in Irving, at least, we're making a plan to make things better for our kids. So next year, five years from now, you're reading the paper, kids' test scores are doing better. Um, it's not on the kids, it's on us, how, how do we help them do better? And for the Bright program, I, I arrived late and left late, uh, so I got some insights that perhaps we're not proud of the presentation. But I, I don't see it as, some might, some older folks might say, oh, you're coddling the children. Well, it's not, to my mind, it's not coddling the children, it's when you have kids that have problems. If you don't help them deal with the problems, you have adults who have problems and they get worse, they rob gas stations, go to jail. Or, or they just don't do as well in life as they could because nobody helped them along the way. Um, so this is not forty years ago, this is today, given the, given the kids, they need help. Uh, so they can be better adults, I think is, is a very, very good thing to do, to me, we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Alright, great, thank you. Um, okay, so uh, um, we're gonna uh move, move the school improvement plan until December. Um, policy review and update. Do we know, Shannon, what this is referring to?
I think it's just on, on there, we didn't have any, we haven't had a meeting.
It's, it's for the policy committee.
Don't worry, we've got some for next.
Perfect, okay, so that concludes our regular business, um, we will be moving into. Um, you know what, actually, I, you had said that there would be minutes next um month, correct?
Yes, she has, um, the minutes that have been like hanging on, um, she has been able to connect with Caitlin and has a draft of those. But she would like to share them with you first and put it on the December agenda.
So I'm gonna make the suggestion that we have one minute, one set of minutes to potentially approve this month. But we have more coming, I would like to suggest that we wait and just do all of them next month, so we.
You're talking about the executive session minutes.
Session minutes, so that we, um, so we won't have an executive session this month, we will wait and bundle them all together. Not bundle them together, but do them all at the same time next month in executive session.
I second the motion.
Okay, so that was my motion, it was seconded, again, just to be clear that we are not gonna use our executive session this month, we'll do it all next month.
And at this point, the only thing we are doing is approving minutes.
Yes. At this point, so, uh, we have a motion and a second, we, we just vote that, so we're, we're clear, everybody's doing what we're all doing. Okay, good, I would just like to vote, you know, uh, make sure it's clear for everybody. Um, so our next school committee meeting will be um December sixteenth at seven PM. Our next policy committee meeting will be the, right before it, again, December sixteenth at six thirty PM. And now we'll make a motion to adjourn. Alright, all in favor? Wonderful.
So what is people, what? Do they open their folders back?
The folders.